Hi, Lee. Oh, I'm saying hi to him and we're not. I think we're as ready as we're gonna get. We're good? Oh, wait, Lee just walked away. Hi, Lee.
Hi, Lisa.
Okay. Oh, Michelle, hi, Michelle. Okay, I'm ready to call the meeting to order. The regular meeting of the planning board is called to order on this 26th day of July 2022. Who was that?
I'm gonna clean this up for me, all right?
Who's, who's speaking?
This is Michelle. I have my husband's laptop and it's gonna say Jeffrey.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sleep perfect, do ciao.
Yes.
Is there a way to mute everybody? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just. Okay. We'll go through roll call. We'll start with you, Jay.
Jay Miller here.
Lisa Bonich present.
Michelle Riordan present.
And then Lee will go to you.
Lee Jacobs present.
Do we have anyone else on the planning board that we don't see out there? No? Okay. So then we'll move to administrative matters. With us today, we have Mark Alvarez over there on my left. He's our interim planning director. As we know, we lost Jane, but we've gained Mark, so welcome.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
It's good to have you.
Thank you, same, good to be here.
And we have before us today the chair and vice chair elections as my time as the chair is up. So I would like to ask or put forth Jay as my choice for chair. If anyone else has other choices, that's who I'm putting forth. Does anyone have any other suggestions? No, so shall we ca- can we call a vote for that one? Okay. Is there a se- can I get a second? Okay, perfect. So then we'll start with Gira for voting.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jay?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Perfect. And then for vice chair? Do we?
There's no issue with you being vice chair, right?
I, I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't know.
I, I don't.
It's a different office, so.
I'd like to nominate Lisa then.
I don't see a problem.
Second.
Oh, okay, we'll take it to a vote. We'll start by.
I'd like to nominate Michelle.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Is there a second?
We second as both candidates, what's the right thing, Tom?
Wait, you've got two nominations, so I, you would take vote on one and then vote on the other and see how many votes you have.
Okay, hi, Subrata.
Okay.
Hello. How are you?
Very well, thank you. Okay, so then.
So knowing that we now, any other nominations for the vice chair?
Now that we have Subrata.
And maybe bring Mr. Pursue up to speed on what's happened so far.
Okay, we introduced Mark Alvarez as the interim planning director. And we voted for Jay as the chair of the planning board and we all voted yes. And right now we're voting for vice chair. Jay has voiced for me and Lee Jacobs has voiced for Michelle and we're going.
Nominated.
And nominated for me and Lee Jacobs has nominated Michelle and we're going to vote. So that's where we're at right now. So we'll start with Gira. Do we take it one at a time?
Well, well, actually Jay is the, the chair at this point.
Oh, there you go, so you take it, Jay.
Couldn't we have done this at the end of the meeting?
Well, I, yeah, right.
Anyway, okay, so any other nominations for vice chair? If not, we have two nominations, we take them one at a time?
Yes.
All right, so, and all in favor of Lisa being the vice chairman?
Okay, so then do we, do we start then with me?
Sure.
Okay, obviously I'm yes for me.
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Michelle?
No.
Subrata?
No.
I vote yes, three, three.
So we're tied.
So a tie vote is basically a failure of the vote. We'd need somebody to break the tie and there's no one to break the tie.
Okay.
So now vote on the next nominee.
Perfect. So then I vote.
So the next nominee is for Michelle Riordan. All those in favor, Lisa?
No.
No.
Lee?
Michelle?
Michelle, yes.
Lee?
Lee, yeah.
Subrata?
Yes.
And me, no.
All right, so you don't have a vice chair at this point.
So what do we do, table to the next meeting or?
That, that's fine.
We are missing one member.
Not really table it, but you can have it come up at the next meeting.
Okay.
And if for some reason you're not available at the next meeting and we don't have a chair or a vice chair, the board can vote on a temporary chair.
And, and again, I don't want to waste the public's time on this, but we can't have co-vice chairs. I mean, because both would be fan- it'd be great to have.
I, there's, there's no rule for it.
Okay. Okay, so we'll table until the next meeting and do it again. Sure. Okay. That was the administrative matters. Next thing are the public hearing items.
You normally read this or do I turn it over to them?
Sorry, I'm here, all right. So we'll start with the PB 22-010, applicant's WD Partners, a resolution pursuant to section 20-3.4B 4A II of the City of South Miami Land Development Code approving a special use application to modify the site plan for an existing convenience restaurant located at 6290 South Dixie Highway, which I believe is Chipotle, correct?
That is correct, sir.
And who is going to speak to this? Marcus. Marcus, fire away.
Thank you, Chair, and congratulations. As you've mentioned, this is the Chipotle restaurant. Previously, it was when it was originally approved in 1999, it was approved as a Slotsky's Deli. At that point, that's when they were approved to have to drive through. Slotsky's ended up closing their doors in the mid, early 2000s. And then Krispy Kreme came in and opened their doors. Unfortunately, Krispy Kreme had to close too. And Chipotle took whatever, when they came in in 2007, they removed the drive-through area and it converted that, the rear of the, rear of the building to parking. Fast forward to today, the applicant is requesting approval to reinstall that drive-through again, which will cause them to lose those five spaces. The reason why this item is before use because part of the, one of the special use conditions for a convenience restaurant states that the city commission will approve all, has to approve all site plans for the, for, for that type, for those types of uses. So that's why it's before you. Staff did a review of, of the project and one of the issues that we found was that currently the property has 37 parking spaces. When they installed that, that drive-through, they're going to lose the five on the rear, bringing them down to 32. For the type of renovation that they're doing, they're going to need 34 parking spaces. So they're going to be in a deficit of two spaces. The city has provisions in the code to accommodate for that type of use. They can either A, request a variance from the city commission for the, do a parking space variance, or the city, I want to say about a couple of years ago amended the, the parking regulations to allow people to purchase parking permits, monthly parking permits in lieu of providing those spaces. As, as, last week, the applicant had, has informed me that through emails, they've, they've been in contact with the finance department in preparation of purchasing those, those permits from, from the city. So it looks like they're going to be addressing the parking deficit by, by the section of the code allows you to, to pay in lieu of. As part of the review of the project, the, the, the plans were sent to our, our traffic engineering consultant, Ms. Diana White, who came back with several comments that are, I'm not going to go through those comments in, in the, due to the essence of time. But the report, the memorandum is in your package. They, they will be required to address all of those comments before this project can move forward to the city commission for their review. Those are also comments, conditions that are placed at the, at the end of the report as well. Now, to be approved, the, this convenience restaurant must comply with the special use general requirements listed in both section 20-3.4A and the special use special requirements listed in 3.4B 4A of the LDC. Of those conditions, staff found that the following, requiring, following conditions are, can be quantified. Number one, all such uses shall comply with all requirements established in the appropriate zoning use district unless additional or more restrictive requirements are set forth below or by the city commission. Pursuant to the city's permitted use schedule, section 20-3. D of the LDC or the Land Development Code, the use of the convenience restaurant is, is permitted in the GR as a special use approval only, which requires city commission approval prior to any commencement of any activities. All such uses, number two, all such uses shall be determined to be of a compatible and complementary nature with any existing plans or anticipated surrounding uses. Because of the nature of South Dixie Highway, the proposed modification will complement the concept that patrons who are traveling along the highway will be able to obtain their food and or drink quickly and re-enter the busy highway. Furthermore, the proposed modifications will bring Chipotle in line with existing convenience restaurants that are already in the same district. Currently in this district, you have McDonald's at the corner of 62nd and Suns, and, and South Dixie. And you, and probably a half a block to the south, you have the Taco Bell, which are both convenience restaurants. So this will complement those, the restaurants that are already existing in the area. And for the special requirements, the state, the code states that no vehicular ingress nor egress shall be permitted along streets and rightaways boarding residential zoning districts in, in the city of South Miami. Public streets, right-of-way sidewalks, and required setbacks may not be used for patio or street side services of any kind. While the site has access to both the north and south via the adjacent shopping center plazas, you have the, the chemical property on the north and then you have the property to the south. Where there, there's a, an appliance store to the south, it used to be a Hollywood video several years ago. There is no entrance to the, to the residential apartment building that's behind them. The only entrance is actually to a right-of-way on, is directly onto US 1. That because of that, staff is recommending approval of this special use application with the, with the conditions listed in the staff report. Now be available to take any questions you have, thank you. You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Marcus on his report? Lee, Subrata, Michelle?
No.
No.
Okay. Just so you know, the applicant is available there on Zoom. You have, you have Diana Steelquist who is representing Chipotle. The, the city's traffic engineer Diana White is also available on the Zoom as, as part of the meeting as well.
Okay. Applicant, do you want to make any comments?
Yes, we are requesting your consideration for this special use permit. The type of drive-through lane that we are proposing is not a true drive-through lane. It's a drive-up lane because people order their food through an app. They're told when to come to the store to pick up their food. There's no menu board, there's no speaker. They don't, they don't pay because they pay online. So the time it takes to go through that line is between two and three minutes. It's a new concept for Chipotle. They've only been doing this program for about a year. We don't have any of these Chipotle, we call them C-lanes in Florida at this time, but we are in permitting processes with other communities in Florida. There's only about 10 stores in the nation right now that have this C-lane. But we're proposing about another 30 more this year.
Any early indications of success with the C-lane and Chipotle's ability to keep things moving?
Yes, yes, and some of that information was provided to Marcus and Diana White with regards to stores in other states. Like I said, we don't have any information right now for anything in Florida.
So the other states, how, so how are the other states doing?
They're doing well. It's, it's a popular program, otherwise Chipotle wouldn't be moving forward with so many this year.
Okay.
We have contacted a traffic engineer and we will get those issues resolved that Ms. White pointed out to us and will provide the information that she needs and the methodology that she's requesting.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? Public comment? Anyone in the audience in the room here?
Yes, Finn Man, Senior Planning Manager with WD Partners, working with Diana. She's our good colleague here at WD Partners and I work on the Chipotle program as well. So I just wanted to voice my support for the project. The C-lanes or Chipotle's have been very successful throughout the country and, and we're looking forward to opening one here in Florida. I'd be happy to take any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so we'll close public comment. Any motions?
For, can I ask questions for the staff?
Go ahead, Subrata.
Just, I'm just curious, what kind of traffic issues were raised and why weren't they resolved before it came to planning board?
The applicant, the, from Diana's report, she had a few comments. I'm looking to see if I still have them in her. She wanted them to add certain items like a stop bar and stop sign at the one-way exit of South Dixie Highway. They, she wanted them to include a do not enter sign at the exit only driveway at the, to the adjacent parcel. She made, she brought up the comment about, about several parking spaces will be removed to accommodate the drive-through. She wanted to make sure that the minimum parking spaces will be in place. She says, please confirm the site meets the minimum required parking spaces with the proposed expansion in place. She also, also wanted a methodology memo be submitted.
We have no, yeah, we have no issue with all the other comments. We're just working mainly on the methodology memo.
My, my, my comment is really why these weren't addressed before it came to planning board. So I mean, that's technically how it should be. But, but anyway, I'm not gonna push it too much, so we, that, that's, that's why I just wanted it to be recorded that these issues need to be resolved before application comes to planning board. I mean, what's the point of planning board reviewing something that we know that they've not been resolved, but with the, with the promise they'll get resolved before it goes through city commission? I mean, that's just not a, a good strategy.
Like I said before, I mean, we don't have any issues except for the memo and we're having to.
We're not, we're not questioning you, I'm just talking about the process for the city. These issues need to be resolved before it comes to planning board. So when we get the project, it's resolved, not with the promise that it's going to get resolved. So hold on it, it's going to get resolved. So that's all.
Certainly, Subrata, if you're uncomfortable with it, you can vote, that you're not prepared to vote for it.
Yeah, so can I motion to approve? Okay, I motion to approve? Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, let's go around the table. We'll start with you.
Yes.
Yes.
Lee? You're on mute, Lee.
I vote no because of the traffic study not being resolved.
All right, Michelle?
No.
Subrata?
I, I'm just gonna let it go. I'm, I'm just not happy with it, but I'm gonna say, okay, yes.
All right, yes. Four, two. Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Okay, next up. See people swinging into battle. The first thing here is PB 22, are we taking any of these together?
I would recommend that you take both of them together since it's, it's for the same project.
Yeah, understood, that's why.
And they, they go hand in hand.
Okay, great. All right, so the first one's PB 22-011, applicant is Mestra Sunset LLC and ordinance pursuant to section 20-5.7 of Land Development Code providing for a map amendment to the City of South Miami official zoning map from transit-oriented District Mixed Use 5, TOD MU5, to transit-oriented Development District Mixed Use 6, TOD MU6, on a 1.6124 acre parcel of property located at 6075 Sunset Drive and as legally described herein. And then related to that, a resolution is PB 22-012, applicant against Mestra Sunset LLC, resolution pursuant to 20-8.9 and other provisions of the City of South Miami Land Development Code approving by special exception a large-scale development on a 1.6124 acre property located at 6075 Sunset Drive as legally described herein. And I think we could also call it across the street, right? So, okay. Who is presenting on behalf of the city?
Marcus will be.
I am, sir.
I'm sorry. Alex David will be the consultant for the city.
Okay.
We need to swear.
Make sure you lean into the mic there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members. I'm Alex David with Calvin Giordano and Associates and I am the consultant hired to review this application. In fact, Calvin Giordano had a team looking at this. We, we had a civil review, landscape review, and traffic review. Ms. Diana White, as was stated previously, for the other applications, she is on, on via Zoom for, for this item also in case there are any questions. Again, the, this project is about, what, 300 feet north of where we're sitting now? And it is on the vacant parcel of 70, just over 70,000 square feet. The proposal, proposals before you tonight are twofold. The one is the request to rezon the property from MU5 to MU6 and the other request is for the special exception to allow a structure greater than 40,000 square feet. The, the, the project consists of 480,000 square feet gross floor area. That's the overall envelope of the building and within that envelope, the proposal is for about 3,651 square feet of retail uses along with a leasing office of 1,353 square feet on the first level. There'll be a lobby on 60th First Avenue and above that, 316 rental apartments with, and included in the building are 329 parking spaces, several loading spaces, and a bike room. There will be two public plazas, a smaller one up on 71st Street and 67th, 61st Avenue, 71st Street and 61st Avenue, and a larger plaza along Sunset Drive over 7,500 square feet, which allows a bonus floor as does the bike room. So this application will be requesting two bonus floors permitted by right of eight floors and they are requesting 10 floors. So they do meet the requirements to get the additional two floors because they are, as I said, providing the bike room and the public plaza. Staff has reviewed a number of submittals and resubmittals of this application. We worked very diligently to get this before you tonight. So I just wanted to, to state that it does meet the transit-oriented development district flume. They're not asking for a land use designation change, so they, they meet that. But they are, as I said, requesting the rezon from MU5 to MU6. Surrounding that property is medical use to the north and that's about a four-story building, I believe. City Hall and the public library across to the south. To the east is the Mac Cycle and an office building, I believe it's seven stories. Yeah, 59th Avenue, is it, or? I'm sorry?
Eight.
Eight, I'm sorry, eight stories. And then to the west is a new, a newer residential structure of eight stories. So that's the surrounding land use. We, we did look at the comprehensive plan and it meets the intent, generally the intent of the future land use element and housing element. It, we reviewed the, the zoning, rezoning requirements in the code and everything meets the standards or requirements of your rezoning code. And, and basically, generally, the, I just wanted to mention that MU5 allows height from two to four stories, but you can go up to eight stories via the bonus program. And the MU6 would allow four to eight stories going up to 12. So they're not seeking the maximum height of 12 stories. They're, they're, they're seeking the, the 10-story height, which is about 105, 105 feet. So again, they meet all the other requirements of the code, parking, landscaping. We went through civil, all of those, all of those items have been met. And again, on the special exception portion, we did review the code and they've met, you know, those, those requirements for the special exception. So it's our recommendation, we're recommending approval with a number of conditions in our staff report, but I'd like to add one or two conditions to the 20, I'm sorry, 33 we have. And basically, and Mr. Pursu brought this, this up. And so that's why we went back and looked at some things and he's correct. We should have had everything in place, but we missed one or two things. So I just want to make sure that they're on the, the record and include those in any, any approvals that you might make. So basically, one condition deals with ADA requirements. There's some tree grates that may not meet the ADA requirements. So we just want to add that as a condition that all tree grates, grates meet ADA requirements. And there's also a column in what we call the site triangle. There may be a visual blockage if you're coming out of the parking garage. So the applicant, we would like the applicant to address the column location on the north side along 71st Street. So, so that the, the site, the, the column in the site triangle be addressed. So they will have to look at that. So that's another condition. And then the auto turns, which are in the back of the package, there are some drawings that may, they're not quite correct. So the applicant needs to correct the auto turn, auto turns in the package. So with those three conditions, we're recommending approval, but we also need time to get those revisions in before any scheduling before the commission. If you approve this or whichever, we, we need some time to review those new drawings. So they must be submitted in a complete new application. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and also. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and also the applicant is here to go through their presentation.
Questions from the planning board for the staff report?
I have, I have a couple of questions, just so that I have it right in my brain, and it's, it's more for Marcus, I think, than for anybody else. Marcus, when I'm looking at this property, if I'm standing here to the left, I have the seniors, right? Across the street, to the left, I have the seniors. Behind that is where the, is that where the, the nursing center is going to go? So we don't really have traffic there. If I remember, we had less parking spaces allotted for that.
I believe they got a variance for parking.
Exactly, because there wasn't going to be kind of in and out. I'm trying to understand before we get into the real nitty gritty of it, the kind of real movement we currently are looking at based on volume on what's there. So we have the seniors, then we have the nursing, then directly behind it, we have, that's a doctor's office, right? It's the one with the little buses?
Innovation Center? Is it called the Innovation Center or something?
I think so. I see little buses.
Yeah, the cancer, the cancer innovation is going to be directly behind this building on Seventy First.
And then we have the hotel.
The hotel is to the east of the cancer innovation on Seventy First Street.
And the daycare.
The daycare will be to the, to the east of this proposed building.
And then you have the building where, where my husband has his office.
Fifty Nine Seventy Five.
So I'm, I'm aware of the traffic in and out there. Okay. I just, I just want to make sure I have a clear picture that, of the congestion or lack thereof that we currently see there when we're talking this one through. Okay.
I have a question for Mark. I wonder if the city has a policy for the number of bike racks in the bike room? How many bikes is it supposed to hold according to the city? With eight hundred or seven hundred and seventy five residents, how many would it hold?
Marcus, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if there's a real standard for bicycle, the amount of bike racks required. I could not find anything.
I would have to check. I know that there, I think there's some type of bonus you can get for doing, for having bike, a bike rack and a bike station. I'm not too privy on the regulations for the TOD MU six district, so I'd have to look into that.
Okay, so what, Mr. Jacobs?
What they are proposing is a full bike room with twenty eight bike racks, a changing room,
and I guess tire fixing and little, those kinds of uses in that one room. And in addition, those are for residents and employees, I believe. And then outside, they're going to have twenty, over twenty, twenty public bike racks also.
Oh, that seems like a small number to get a whole floor put on.
Yeah, your code, yeah, your code is silent to that, I believe.
Right. Yeah, it's as if it doesn't, is not important. Because eight hundred people and only thirty bikes, that doesn't seem like it jives.
Well, but I mean, we can't, we can't force them to do something that's not in the code.
No, I'm saying that the code should be complete. It's not, it's lacking. I'm just pointing that out.
This was, this was a discussed item for sure when we were looking at the Winn-Dixie property, the bike room. The same sort of issue.
I think maybe we should take that up separately.
Yeah, the commission probably, we can just make a note.
Make a note, yeah.
Marcus keeps so well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Subrata, how about you? This is your time for your questions.
I'm waiting for the presentation.
Okay. Last, I just have a quick one, which I think, the auto turn, give me that layman's terms. I mean, is this as simple as like a turnaround?
Yeah, it makes, you, you have to make, they do a drawing with different sized vehicles to make sure they can turn the corners and all that kind of stuff. So that's what they need to tweak, one, one of those, the couple they have in there. So that's what Diana pointed out, so that's why I just wanted to bring that up separately.
And the second condition you talked about adding, dealing with would be a visibility issue, correct? About the column in the back?
Yes.
When you're exiting the garage, being able to see foot traffic, car traffic, or both?
Both, but mostly foot.
Okay.
And that's my concern. The sidewalk is right there, so that's the bigger issue.
And so that would clearly be a condition we would add to this, as you propose it. Okay.
And, and when you're, when you're looking at that, will you be taking into account that there's a preschool right there? Because if I, if I'm looking at these drawings correctly, your in and out is right next to the preschool. I, the building that, like I said, my husband's building is on the other side of the preschool, and the in and out is there too. And I know it's, it's an issue for us as well.
When the traffic engineer does her review, she takes into account the surrounding uses. So I know Diana has looked at that.
Perfect. Yeah, it, it looks pretty well thought out to me.
I have a question. So when you say she takes into account, into account the surrounding uses, is it the current or the proposed? Because as Lisa said, a lot of changes are occurring in that same area, so.
Right, but basically, we have to look what's on the ground now. So we don't know what's happening in the future, you know, it's the best available data. So if there is a, a plan approved, and we're given that plan, that's taken into account. And that's typically what happens for traffic studies. We, they look at what's being, what has been approved in the area, what's on the ground now and what's been approved. And in some communities, there are a lot of changes, so you have to know what's coming down the pike.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to ask a question as well. I'd like to ask if the apartments, the rental apartments are, what, are there going to be one, two, and three bedroom apartments? But, or how many apartments is going to be of different rooms?
Yeah, it's, it's one and two bedrooms only, but what's interesting about this project, there are thirteen different floor plans. So that's a lot for a building. So I applaud them for that, you know, because we don't see that. It's usually a couple, so.
Michelle, any follow up question?
And my other question, my other question is, is it going to be mixed income? Or is it just going to be regular income towards the rental? Are there going to be any low income rentals there at all?
Marcus.
They're meeting the affordable housing requirement of the, of the city. There, I think it's thirty two units out of three sixteen will be for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff? If not, to the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ines Madridro. I am an attorney with the law firm of Holland and Knight with offices at seven oh one Pinnacle Avenue. I'm here this evening, joined by my client, the principal from Mestra Sunset. I'm joined by Mr. Juan Poleo and Henry Pino. They are, I'm also joined by our design team from MSA Architects, Annette Tolnolasko. On the Zoom call, we have Alexandria Diala from Whitkin Holt Landscape Architects, our civil engineer, Todd Simo from David Plumber and Associates, and our transportation consultant, Richard Garcia with RGA and Associates. And I'm joined by my colleagues, James Williams and Erica Adams and Mish Toot. It's a whole team of attorneys learning all about the joys of land use. I am very excited to be before you this, this evening, and I have to start by, again, thanking your staff and the city's consultant by all the innumerable hours they have dedicated to guiding us through the process to bring this project before you. I'm going to start with our aerials, which the first one is just general location of, of the site that was described previously. It is a sixty seventy five sunset. It is a one point six one acre parcel of land across the street from where we are right now. It's currently fenced and vacant because this project, the site was approved for another development that was very close to being start construction, but the, the economics of the project did not work out, which is partly one of the reasons why we're here. We had to go back to the drawing board and come up with what would make this, this site work. And so the surrounding areas, it's, as Miss Member Bonish was asking, here we have all the major landmarks around us. And the most important takeaway from, from this exhibit, which seems really obvious because you all drive past the site every day, it's proximity to the metro rail and what it means to be a transit oriented development project. That we always, we've, we've talked a lot about TOD designations for other parcels that may be a little bit further away, that may require somebody across US one, which sometimes is not extremely safe. We are next door. Somebody who lives in this project when it's built can literally just cross the street and ride metro rail. The other really important and exciting thing is that we're going to be next to the underline. And the underline is a linear ten mile park mobility corridor that's going to be providing pedestrian and bicycle bike paths. So the theme of our project is bicycles. We are going to be able to have our residents ride bikes to, you know, either recreationally or for transportation to work because they can put the bicycles on the metro rail and ride it wherever they're going, or, or just to ride, ride around town and really use micro mobility. The, the district is, you know, the TOD district is intended to promote development because it's offset by its proximity to public transportation, right? I don't mean to, to pander, you all know about it, but it's so important because we are literally right next to it. And it's reflected in the goals and policies of your comp plan. It promotes, you know, higher density and development near that TOD because it's good planning and it's sensible development. So the, before you, we have two requests. The first is to rezon the property. It's currently TOD MU five, and we're seeking TOD MU six. There is no comprehensive plan change associated with our request. It's just a rezoning because the current comprehensive plan designation of, of the site supports the TOD. And the difference is really the height. As you can see, this is how the zoning map is currently. Most of the properties on Sunset are TOD MU five. I think the, the planning intent was that as the properties were being developed, if they needed to come and seek TOD MU six, they would come before you and prevent the plan of development so this board would have the opportunity to review the rezoning in conjunction with a project. As was mentioned by Mr. David, there's no difference between TOD MU five and TOD MU six in terms of the permitted uses, the residential density, the setbacks, the requirements of parking. The, the real difference is the height. So in the TOD MU five, you can do two stories, up to four stories by right, and then eight stories with bonuses. And the TOD MU six, you can do eight stories by right and up to twelve stories with bonuses. In the case of our project, we are only seeking two bonus floors. And I will walk through those, and I will address the whole bike room and how we think it's going to operate and meshes with our proximity to the metro rail and also the underline. And so the, the, there was a description of the project and what we're proposing, three hundred and sixteen units with three hundred and twenty nine parking spaces. We are not seeking any parking variance, any parking reductions. This is parking, this project will meet parking, ten stories. We are proposing three retail spaces and, and two plazas that total eight thousand four hundred and, and twenty square feet. So here's the breakdown of, of the bonuses. And I'm going to start with the plaza first, even though it's on the bottom of the slide. We have a plaza on Sunset, and it's seventy, seventy five thousand, I'm sorry, seven thousand five hundred and thirty square feet. And we have a smaller plaza on Seventy First Street of a hundred, eight hundred and ninety square feet. They total eight thousand four hundred and twenty square feet. And I think the importance of this element, as we think about it adding a bonus floor, is that plazas provide urban spaces of respite and green areas, right? This is not a park. It's not intended to provide a public park for people to come and picnic. It's really a break from development. They are a break from buildings. They are a break from the continuity of the sidewalks. And it's, like I said, it's, it's a respite for an opportunity along Sunset for people to, to congregate and have, be able to, to sit there and to enjoy shade and be protected from, you know, inclement weather and the heat and whatnot, but also just a break from just development, break in the pedestrian path, animating what's happening at the street level for the pedestrian. The second bonus is the, the bike room. And I am very excited for the bike room because it's not only an amenity for the residents, but it's also for the employees. It's for staff members can come in their bike and change and not have to, to drive to work if they choose to do so. There was a comment relating to whether that was sufficient bikes. You know, it's a mixed bag. A lot of people who have nice bikes would choose not to store their bikes in a bike room. They may want to take them up and keep them in their apartment. It's just, it's an amenity. It's not intended to be a parking space for every resident to, to have a parking for their bike. It's really a, an amenity for them to be able to store their, their, you know, their helmets, their gear and to change. And if they choose to store their bikes there, they can do so. In addition, we will also have just regular bike racks for somebody who's coming to visit to just be able to, you know, lock their bike and come and go. And again, we're next to the underline. We are excited that we'll be able to have micro mobility and just promote cycling and healthy lifestyle for all the residents of this project as well as the residents of the City of South Miami. There will be a bike repair station. We will also have loaner bikes. And, and again, the, we're next to Mac Cycle, so if they need something fixed or they need a spare tube, they can run next door and, and grab that and get that fixed. The, the project itself is a very, very nice, modern with residential mixed use project that has, you know, amenity space, it has a pool, it has a quiet deck for the residents to, to just sit and relax and be outside of their, of their units, their multipurpose rooms. That will be a game room, maybe a workspace room, all of these amenities that we have in these, in these, in these modern buildings. As was also asked, we have a mix of units. We have a hundred and seventy eight two bedroom, two bath units with seven different layouts and a hundred and thirty eight one bedroom, one bath units with three different layouts. Here's a wonderful elevation of, of the plaza. And again, it's just a very well designed, very elegant building in addition to what's happening along Sunset. There's, you know, we have, we prepared some slides that address the population growth, the housing crisis. We all know. We, we desperately need it. It's for everybody. From somebody who's downsizing to serve the, you know, the, the workforce population that needs to live near, you know, where we need the services, for our teachers, for the nursing staff, for, for everybody. And one of the interesting things about our project is that we're the first ones to have to come in and say, we are going to provide the, the affordable housing requirement of your code. And that's thirty two units. That's a considerable number. Thirty two units in this building will meet the city's criteria for affordable housing. The project meets school concurrency. It's always, you know, an important element. We don't want to attract families, whether it's small families with one child, you know, two bedroom apartment, without knowing that they'll be able to, to go to our schools if that's their choice. And so the school board has analyzed the, the status of the concurrency for public schools. It's a requirement of all these applications, and right now, there is capacity in the, the public schools that serve this area for this project. We have our design consultants here. I am going to let her be available for, for a quick, you know, basically, I don't think she needs to revisit the design she's here for, for questions. But to recap, we agree with all the conditions from staff. This is, this building will meet the sustainability standards of the city, including EV ready parking spaces for more than what's required. The requirement is twenty percent. Our numbers are going to be closer to twenty one and a half percent. Less car dependency, no parking variances, but yet, you know, making the project be less car dependent because we'll make it easy for the residents to use their bikes to ride public transportation. So they will be given all the options at the, at no expense. Sometimes we say, well, we, give us a parking variance because people are going to ride the metro. Here's like, no. If they want to ride the metro, the metro's right there. But if they choose to have a But if they choose to have a vehicle, they will be able to have a parking space for, for their vehicle. So again, we, we agree with all the conditions and are just here to answer all the questions.
All right, thank, thank you very much. Questions for the applicant from the board? And if someone could mute their phone, it would help. We're not sure where that's coming from. So any questions, uh, from the board here, uh, to the applicants?
I, I think it's beautiful. I think it's, I think it's great.
I have a, uh, just a few questions. So the addition of two floors takes you how many feet above the, the existing 100-foot limit with M U five? Those two tall floors, two? That's almost, okay, thanks. That's, that was my question. And then the 32 affordable units, uh, will they be a mix of one ones and two twos, two ones? Or are they all going to be, uh, the smaller units, all going to be the larger units?
If you, you need to, yes.
Yeah.
It's fun for you to answer, but you need to give your name.
Yeah, we need to swear him in.
If they'd like to be sworn in, uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Juan Pollo. I'm with Maestra Real Estate, Maestra Sunset, which is the owner of the project and the developer. And, uh, thank you for, for the opportunity. And what I would just want to add is that it's going to be a mix. And, and I think the, the way it works, it depends on the families that come in and the size of the families that come in.
So could that actually, this is just, uh, never thought about this before, but could that actually be, that could be different units each year based on that demand, I assume, and how many leftover or available lower income units you have, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great, okay.
Now, I have a question. Will these units be scattered throughout the building? Or will you be, will they be selected in certain spaces? Or will it be a mix of floors or something fairly random? Or is it specifically?
We haven't gotten that far yet, but ideally they'll be scattered around, throughout the building.
I, I just like, like Lisa was saying, you know, so I love this project. I mean, I think it's where it's located, you know, west of Dixie Highway or whatever direction that is, where most of our schools, if not all, are located, at least the public schools. And that it's actually in a real transit-oriented district or could be, right? I mean, the city has to get accustomed to using mass transit. And so this, I think will go a long way to helping. So I, I love where it is. I love the design of it and the first-class nature of it, so.
And, and interestingly enough, you, you might not even know this, but the school that's on 67th and Sunset has seen a huge decrease in children there. So bring them on, you know? It's, it's interesting, isn't it? Like that they're saying there's no issue. There is no issue because they don't have enough.
Can you clarify one more thing? In terms of egress and all that for the residents, where will they come into their parking spaces? I don't know, I didn't catch that on this. Where will we come, which, where will the flow of traffic go in and out? So on? So the entrance and exit will both be there?
Correct, yes. Both entry and exit will be along Southwest 71st Street.
So if I remember the rap, the map right, the roadway in or whatever the flag is on it right now is be across the street from the entrance, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. The retail on the bottom, uh, is there any thoughts? The spaces don't look very large, so it doesn't look like you're aiming for a, a large grocery store tenant or whatever, which we seem to talk about a lot. Thoughts about who that, who would take those spaces or what you would like to see?
We haven't really given it that much thought right now because we're trying to meet the requirements at this point. But it will be, uh, uh, I think ideally it will be some type of coffee shop for, for the pedestrians that are in the area to enjoy, like pastries and.
So will these be different sizes depending on who your tenants might be? Or they'll do some flexibility?
I have a question. Going forward, I see that you have concern for affordable housing. And, uh, in the future, since you didn't take the, uh, extra floor for affordable housing, I wonder why you didn't do it? Can you give us some insight into that decision?
Well, I'll be, we'll be very frank. We, we had meetings and we did outreach and there was concern about a 12-story building. And so we read the proverbial tea leaves and figured that it was more prudent to come before you with a 10-story building than to seek approval of a 12-story building.
So you, so the, yeah, you didn't want to take the flat for a 11-story? You only get one floor for affordable, I think, okay?
Like I said, we, we did outreach and we spoke to, I mean, it'll be disclosed when this item goes before the commission. It's no doubt, I'm a registered lobbyist and I was registered when we met with the mayor and the commissioners. And there, um, there was concern about a 12-story building. Or, or 11 stories frankly, for that matter.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle or Sabrata?
My question is also, um, as far as the parking is concerned, I know you're saying you have 329 parking spaces and there's 316 units. Um, and I know that, um, biking is, um, what we're basically looking at. But what about those that have the two bedrooms? There are two people in the bedrooms. Where would, if both parties have, um, a vehicle, how would that be accommodated? If there's, you know, others, units that have two vehicles, how is that going to be accommodated?
First, we're not seeking, just because we always have to give you the lawyer response and I apologize for that. I understand your question. The, the, the legal answer is that we're not seeking a parking variance and that we meet parking. The practical answer is that the, that when, when individuals rent their units, they, um, some of them will only want one space. And so there's, some of them may not want a space. We have some spaces that are designated as tandem, meaning one space, but they can park one in front of the other. So two cars can park in one space as long as they are allocated to that same unit. For purposes of our traffic, of our parking count, we count them as one space. But operationally, one unit owner can have two vehicles parked in that one space. Did I confuse that answer? Sometimes I talk.
The other thing.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. The other thing is, are there going to be designated parking spaces for, with the basic room numbers? Or is just first come, first served? And if there are going to be any type of security as well there?
I don't, I think Mr. Pollo can respond.
Sure, so right now we don't feel that designated spaces are necessary. Only the ones that are, that Inez mentioned that are tandem and handicap, of course. And then there will be a, a security system, cameras, included cameras. And, uh, there's the possibility of a gate as well to get into the building.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I wanted to know, out of that many parking spaces, how many will be designated for visitors? Or is that not considered?
The parking requirements account for visitor parking. So 10% of the total number of required, once you come up with a total number of required parking spaces, then you have to add an additional 10% of that total for visitor parking. There's also on-street parking around the project. So I know, sometimes people don't want to park on the street, but that's revenue to the city of South Miami, so. There, there's on-street parking there.
And a sizable garage.
That's right.
That is largely vacant at night, so. Sabrata? I'm Harley.
Go ahead, Ms. Sabrata.
No, no, I, I have some questions for the staff, but I would rather wait till. I have a question about transportation. In the handout that we got, it said, the roadway adopted LOS standard is LOS D plus 50% on US one or E for Sunset Drive. Can you define what LOS D plus 50 and E for Sunset means according to the state? Whatever, what does that mean? LOS D and E? Level of service?
Well, I mean, ba- basically, um, because of the mass transit on US one, you could go over the capacity of the road, uh, roadway because you have extraordinary transit right next to US one. The levels of.
So it's like the, what, what does the D mean?
He knows more than I do.
Mark Alvarez, E is considered the capacity of the roadway under normal circumstances without the transit. And D would be.
Are you the transportation person for the representing?
No, we can have them answer it for you.
Yeah, I'd like to get more specific about that.
Diana, could you?
There, there's, to, to the person, the board member asking. So we have this, the city's transportation consultant who's available to respond. And I believe our transportation consultant is also available. Can you clarify who you want responding to the question?
The person that's working for you, whoever it is.
Richard, are you on the call?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, loud and clear.
Yeah. Okay, so level of service, like everyone's been saying, level of service E is the threshold of the maximum roadway capacity, um, when you move.
What, what does that mean? Does that mean it's maxed out at E? E is the highest it can do? Or is A, B, C, is that, that how it works or what?
Correct. A, so A is like the greatest level of service. So the volume that goes along with level of service A is much lower.
So A is, A is perfect, like a grade in a, in a school?
Correct.
Okay.
And then E would be the lowest and which holds the highest volume, obviously, as more capacity. Um, and like David said, uh, you could go to, on US one, you could go to level of service E plus 50%. And the concept behind that is that if you don't like the congestion on US one, then that encourages people to use transit.
Yeah. So E is a, Sunset Drive is lockdown failure. That's what E is, just like a student would be failing if he got an E or an F in our public schools, right?
No, it would be F actually, so E is acceptable.
Oh, so it, our, our, our roads can go down to F?
Well, if you exceed the, the volume of level of service E, then you end up in F. Yes, sir.
And what is, uh, this, the, what can it, what does a driver experience in a level of service E? How many, you have to wait for a light to change, for instance?
Well, these levels of service are for roadways, not for the intersections. So it's the roadway links. The in- intersections were also looked at. That's really more of an operational level of service. The level of service that we're talking about are really the roadway link. And so what they can experience is clearly more traffic at level of service E than they would be at level of service D. Now realize this is also at the peak hour, so, which is generally the PM peak. So we're talking about one hour of the day. Usually the AM peak, it's less, but we look at the worst-case scenario. And, and it doesn't include, you know, holidays, weekends, nights, other times.
No, it shouldn't. What we're, what we're concerned about as residents is the peak hours, the morning and the evening, uh, crush. So, so if the level of service is near maxed out, an F could be complete failure, but it's a E and a D, that's not much better. And we're putting 800 more people on the street, not in cars maybe, but moving. That's, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you. I, it makes things very clear now. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, uh, add something. So Sunset, the level of service that we found on the roadway was level of service D. And that's with the project, with committed developments and also with background growth, which we grew the traffic some years into the future because it's going to take time to build. And there was available capacity on Sunset of approximately 1,500 vehicles, bidirectional in both directions in the peak hours.
Near failing. I have, in my, the handout that they gave us, it says E for Sunset and D, D plus 50 for US one.
Yeah, what they were saying is that's the, that's what, the threshold of what you allow. But what we measured is, uh, it would be at level of service D. So we're getting a D and we're allowed to get an E, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the presenters?
When is the project supposed to begin if one's approved?
As quickly as they can start. They, as you know, this, this site is, um, has been cleared for over two years? Three, three years? And so the owners are very, very eager to, to start. And that's why actually, I appreciate all of you being here today, but that's why there is a special meeting of this board to, to get it approved, um, with your support, obviously, and to break ground as quickly as possible. We're very eager to get started. This is not one of, going to be one of those approved but never built.
And how long does it took, supposed to take before? How long would it project take?
The project will take 18 months after construction starts.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Sabrata?
No, again, I, my, my question's up for the staff and I'll wait, the public hearing is over.
All right, uh, public comments. Anybody, actually, do you have, you guys, you've been answering questions, thank you very much as we've gone along. But if you feel you need to make any kind of rebuttal presentation, feel free.
No, no, we, I think we, just to answer your questions.
Yeah, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, public comments. I don't see any members of the public, uh, in the audience here. What about on, uh, by Zoom?
If, if anyone on Zoom would like to make a comment or testify with regard to this item, please raise your virtual hand. In order to do that, wave your mouse pointer at the bottom of your Zoom screen and you'll see a number of options, one of which is the word reactions. Click on that word and you'll see the words raised hand. Click on raised hand and your hand will be raised and the chair will recognize you. I see at least one hand.
I see JC's phone.
Hi, my name is JC Freda. I'm a resident of South Miami.
Welcome.
6741 Southwest 68 Paris. I just want to say I think this is a wonderful project and I'm looking forward to seeing something get built on this lot.
JC, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close it to public's comments and we'll move on to board discussion. Lisa?
Thank you. I just want to say that this building, it, it essentially gives us everything we're asking for, right? We, we've asked for affordable housing, they give it. We've asked for something that's close to the metro rail, we give it. Literally, I don't know what more we could ask for that we haven't gotten. So you say we get more traffic on Sunset. I got to tell you, I'm at the building next door three times a week. I go in and out on the same space that these guys are going to go in and out on. I don't ever have a traffic problem. And to say, oh, you're there on off-peak hours, no, I'm there in the morning, I'm there in the afternoon. I'm in and out, anybody who knows me, I'm in and out of that area multiple times a day. So I say, it's, it's actually giving us everything we ask for when we ask for something in the Todd District. So, good job, guys.
Thank you. More discussion. I, I would, since Lisa's started down the path, I would concur with her that this is something that we need here. I think it's a bit of a pioneering thing, not just because of the affordable housing piece, which Lee, I would think you would appreciate their tackling, tackling that proactively. But also because that they're clearly, for this to work the best for everybody, there's going to have to be some move towards mass transit, bicycles and other more efficient means of transportation. I think that's self-selecting, right? When traffic gets really bad, you start riding your bike, you start riding the rail. And most of the traffic that gets bad is not coming from your project or South Miami. And most of the traffic that gets bad is not coming from your project or South Miami. It's coming from people, you know, moving back and forth between downtown Miami and far South Dade, or near South Dade. Uh, so, um, I, I think this is a great thing, along with, with all the conditions that were outlined by the city folks, addition of the two or three that we talked about earlier, I very much support it, so. Other comments?
Can I, can I ask a few questions of the staff, please?
Sabrata, that, the ship has sailed for questions of the staff.
What do you mean?
Discussion. It was an agenda item earlier. And I, we'll go ahead this time, but this is your attempt to try to manage the meeting. And so staff questions were earlier. So if there's something that's come up, that's been said by the applicant, that's inconsistent with what the staff has told you or written, feel free to point it out.
All right. So let me, let me ask the staff. The, the previous, uh, project was approved for, what was the height that was approved for the previous project? And what is the difference between this project and the previous project in terms of height?
I'm, I'm not, I was not involved in the previous project, but that's not what was, is before us tonight, so I don't know.
Correct, it's okay, I don't know, but it's okay to say I don't know.
Okay, previous project was approved for eight stories, and this is ten stories. And I think-
Sabrata, you can, you can assume this much, I mean, eight stories, they're permitted to go to a hundred feet. With this change, they're permitted to go up to either the twelve stories or one hundred and fifty feet, they chose to go up five feet. That's what's on the table today, so.
Hundred and five feet, is that what it was?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. Uh, just a, uh, minor housekeeping. The, the application, the, the report, the staff report has a la- a future land use map and a zoning map. And there's some discrepancies between the two. I should look into that before it goes to the commission, because it's public document, they don't. Uh, if you look at the future land use map, the, the land use north of Seventy-first Street, I think the way I see it is that says mixed use, commercial, residential, four stories. And if you look at the zoning map, it shows Todd MU five. So those are not too, uh, those are not consistent.
I'll, I'll check that, okay, and, and correct it by commission. Okay, could, could the project that, could a previously approved project have changed that, we just haven't caught up with that? I'm thinking of the Marshall Williamson project, that we may have changed the use.
Could, 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 we might have changed the land use and we-
Anyway, it's a great, it's a great point, so. We'll, we'll look into that, I, I do know that the city's zoning map was changed not too long ago. There were some corrections that needed to be made, so we'll, we'll verify. Marcus?
Yeah, not too long ago, before Jane left, she, she got the, both the, the land use map and the zoning map updated to what the current, current zoning districts are, like they were able to add the MU six. They corrected the, the land use, because I think the, the back of this building previously, when in the original application, was MU four on the back half, MU five on the front, so they, so they corrected, they corrected that. The, was it the-
Yeah, that was, that was changed, that was changed.
I'm, I'm sorry, Sabrata, what was that?
Yeah, that was changed to make the whole site MU five.
Correct, correct, that was in the original application.
But I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the properties north of Seventy-first Street.
Is it, is it safe to say, though, that we can leave this with Marcus instead of taking this time to do it, so we can move forward with the applicant?
Well, this is part of, part of the present, part of the information that's being presented to us, so. So, uh, just check on that. Hmm, the next question I have is, uh, basically, in the entire, uh, application, the only reason that I see the change for zoning, the rationale for it, your argument, is that they just want to build more. I mean, I, is there any other compelling argument for increasing the, changing the zoning?
What's not, what, what about having a new project like this, bringing this many units to a part of the town that we think will help us, as we've had comments going here, what?
No, no, that's-
Wouldn't justify trying to do that. And, and by the way, the changes, Sabrata, were per, I mean, these are bonus floors and everything that go with things we've already written into our statutes, correct?
We, we went through that the last time, last project, when we approved, same story we went through. And so I'm just asking, what is the, you know, compelling argument that one has to change a zoning just because someone wants to build more? That's not always a compelling argument for a zoning change.
Next question?
So there's no, there's no compelling argument. Affordable housing, hmm, I'm, I'm glad to hear that there's, uh, there's thirty-two units of affordable housing. Uh, but there's, the application package, there's nowhere it says how many units are improvised. The staff report is totally silent, not even in the condition. And the applicant's, uh, in the letter does mention they're going to provide a favorable housing, but I don't, I don't find it anywhere in terms of how many units, how they're going to be administered or anything like that, so I'm just, you know, a little surprised that it's not in the, even in the conditions.
But they, didn't they answer that?
Yeah. The, the, uh, Mr. President is correct, it is in the letter of intent, it is not in a condition, uh, because it's required by code. That's why we didn't put it in, if the board feels that a condition is needed, we could put it in, it's very simple.
All, all the, all the, a lot of the conditions that we have in the conditions are required by code, so that's not, that's really not, uh.
We, we can add it, Sabrata, they spoke, they spoke to that several times this evening, we spoke to that, so thirty-two units? Still the same as we talked about two minutes ago?
Correct.
Okay, great, so add it to a condition if you would. You guys okay with that?
Yes.
Next.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Okay, great, any other questions?
Can I have one final question?
Sure.
And I'm, I'm just curious, um, of the one and two bedroom, and I know they're different models, but could you give, I know you, you may be able to, may not, could you give just maybe an approximate of how much would a one bedroom and a two bedroom start?
Um, I, I don't have that information with me right now, but they'll definitely be, uh, market competitive, so, um, I don't recall what the one bedroom or two bedroom prices, since we, we have to update those almost monthly these days. But, uh, they'll obviously be, uh, competitive to the market around it, and actually, uh, we feel it is probably going to be a little below that, just to, to maintain, uh, the, the neighborhood, so.
Okay, I thank you for that, because basically, that was the reason why I was asking, because, um, the people that live in this community is not up to Miami Dade's, um, income, so, um, that was the reason I'm asking for those that live in this community. I'm hoping that it, they will be able to afford to stay here or be a part of the project. I like the project, but I also would like to know that the, those that are in this community will be able to afford to stay here as well, in them.
And that is our goal as well.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you.
Let's, if not, we'll close it to questions, yes, sir?
Now, when, when, when ready, I'd like to read, read the four additional com- uh, conditions into the-
Okay, all right. So, uh, before we go to a motion, Tom, do we go, uh, as a, as a group, we go one by one, correct? In other words, we combine the discussion around two different requests?
Well, I, you have to, you have to address each one individually for the vote.
Okay.
So you'll, uh, read the title?
Yep.
And say that, you know, the votes will be on this title, there'll be a motion.
Yep.
Motion to approve item PB-
Yep.
Uh, twenty-two dash zero one one.
Yep, got it, okay. So with that in mind, uh, I'm looking for a motion on PB twenty-two dash zero one one as written with the additional conditions, including?
Okay, four additional conditions, uh, that all tree grates and sidewalk widths meet ADA requirements, that the column in, in the site triangle be addressed or relocated, uh, that the auto turn diagrams be corrected. And the fourth one is that the project meet the requirements of section twenty dash affordable housing, whatever that number is.
Which we believe to be thirty-two.
Thirty-two, I'm sorry?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, thank you.
Yeah, that's, I believe, I'm-
Which is ten percent.
Yep. Okay, with those conditions, a motion?
I motion to approve as mentioned here.
Second?
Second, all right.
All right, let's put it to a vote.
You want to start with me?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes. Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Sabrata?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so unanimous, all right. The second, uh, request here is PB two-two dash zero one two, as written, again with the additional conditions, and the same additional four conditions that we had before. So the ADA, the column location, the auto turnaround, and thirty-two units. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve as mentioned.
Second?
Second.
All right, let's go through the vote.
Yes, yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Sabrata?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much. Okay, so, uh, I'm following Lisa's cheat sheet, thank God it's here. Uh, public, public comments or new busi- new general business for the, uh, planning board?
Let's see.
Uh, I don't see, again, any public in the audience here physically. If anyone's on the telephone or on Zoom that would like to make public comments, we'd appreciate you doing that. So please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll close the floor to public comments, open the floor to any new business that, uh, we have?
Nope.
Anyone know of any new business that we should be discussing?
Can I?
Sabrata? Yes, sir.
Bring something?
Yes.
I think we, we have talked about this, uh, artist, I've talked about it before. I think the city really needs to do an overall, uh, planning, master planning of downtown, uh, past CRA, previously designated CRA area and the US one corridor. Uh, we, so that we don't keep sort of doing these projects on a side-by-side basis. We need to have a overall vision of our downtown CRA area and a US one corridor, uh, as a master plan, vision plan, so that we have a, uh, uh, proper guidance as to where the developments are going.
I, I think it, Sabrata, I think you're right, and I believe Brian Court, Commissioner Corey has initiated that, but I don't know if he's done this comprehensively, so Marcus, can we include that in our comments that go to the commission?
That's fine, that'll be part of the minutes, once, once I, I produce it, that'll be-
That'd be great.
That's part of new business.
Is, is it safe to say that the commission would all be supportive of Sabrata's request that we get some updated?
Yes, I was going to say absolutely, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
And, and I think it's important for us as a group to note, because we continue to speak about affordable housing, that we understand that we now have the related companies that has a combination of public housing, workforce housing, affordable housing, and regular housing. We also have the location of the Family Dollar, which is workforce housing, another building going up across the street from that, which is workforce housing. I've also heard just recently that the school board is looking at the JRE Lee School location to knock it down and do more affordable housing, so when we are taking into consideration affordable housing, we need to be very aware that we have a plethora of affordable housing e- either shortly coming or coming our way, so it, I don't think we're going to find ourselves as a very small city with a lack of affordable housing in the very near future.
Yeah.
So I think that shortly that will cease to become a topic of conversation, thankfully for us.
Lee?
I'd like to bring something up for, uh, we, I talked about that, the zoning, Marcus, hmm, it needs to be, uh, you know, if it's important to have some kind of restriction, to leave the bicycle room up to the builder-
Yeah.
-to do it how he wants, it's ridiculous, because we give them a whole floor of, uh, benefits, and that's a big, big, big bonus with very little reward for us.
I, I think, I think you're right.
We're not using our leverage.
Yeah, that needs some definition, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, whether it's inside and outside, because we, we're leaving both-
Yeah.
-to, to, to the discretion of the developer, and, and while both are great, I, I, I think, we think twenty-eight is little, when you think about what real estate costs are, twenty-eight might be a lot to a developer, that's- so we need to find a happy medium between inside and outside.
Yeah, but we do need to look at, Lee, I agree with you, you've got to get some definition. Other, other comments or things that?
And since you, and since that was brought up is for, is the, um, affordable housing also, um, as the developer, would they also be willing to allow some of the people in the resid- um, in the area be able to work on some of their, um, projects as well?
You mean as, as-
Have that been considered?
In building, you mean?
Yes.
In other words, hire local population for that?
I, I don't know that that's our-
I, yeah, I don't know either, um, I mean, Marcus, you, you can put it in the minutes, because Michelle's brought it up. I'm not sure where that, I'm not sure where that'll go. I don't know, I understand what you're saying, hire the locals.
Right.
I just don't know if that gets done still anymore, where that becomes a, well, it would certainly be an intent, uh, I think.
Right.
Voicing, voicing our desire to see that happen might make it happen, so.
They're doing it Miami Gardens.
Yeah.
The garden apartments.
So we'll, we'll put on there that we would, you know, the, the, uh, it was brought up that we should consider a way to leverage the developers into hiring some of our folks, I, I think we got to be careful there, but-
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a slippery slope.
Yeah. Other, other comments? Okay, uh, next order of business is the approval of the minutes, which you have in your package from our last meeting.
I didn't have it.
Anybody have any questions or comments or edits that you would like to see made?
Oh, I had my, from the last meeting, I think I have it here.
It'll take a while.
Yeah, it does. We missed one meeting, right? Yeah.
I know, right, I, when I look-
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting since April, we didn't, we didn't have June, May or June.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I-
I'm just, do everything.
So if there aren't any questions, if I can have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, let's go real quick, approval?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and yes for me, so all voted yes.
Thank you, everybody.
And future meeting date, we're going to go back to our normal schedule, correct, Marcus, which is the second Tuesday?
That is correct, we're going back to the second Tuesday, this was only a special meeting.
Okay.
So the, the regular meeting with, is always the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay, does that still work generally for everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
I, I think, it's just, it's muscle man, I, it's because of commission meetings and all that kind of stuff, I think, right?
Yeah, but it's also in the code for the second Tuesday.
Never mind. Object if you'd like, but we can't do anything about it. Okay, uh, thanks very much, everyone, and, uh, we'll see you in a month.
Thanks.
Less than a month, because this meeting's like-
Thank you, good night.
Two weeks, see ya. Thank you.
Good night.